I'm going to call the meeting to order. October 10th, regular Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for coming. We are waiting for one more for our quorum, but we can start with public audience. Thank you all for coming, and is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Please stand up, tell us where you're from, your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
I'm Bob Uke, I live in Simsbury. I've lived here for 30 years. I live on Noddy Drive. I'm here to say that I've had four children go through the system. They're well-educated. I used to write regularly to, when they were in school, to the superintendent of school, or to the Board of Education, actually, chairman, and thank them for the excellent job they did. I'd always point out some notion of excellence that had occurred to each one of my children because I was appreciative, and they're all flourishing well, in large measure, so I'm happy for that. I am most unhappy, this report I read recently in the paper about the way Coach Cohen was treated, a 35, I think 35-year-plus employee of this town and this board. In particular with one of my children, Coach had a profound beneficial effect on him. He ran for coach for four years, both fall and spring, and so we know Coach Cohen in our home, and I know countless other families, if not hundreds, who have been affected equally by Coach. Coach knows. Coach knows how to train children firstly, which is different than being an athlete, and Coach knows how to develop people. Coach taught discipline, he taught the value, and I'm not talking about, he was a tough biology teacher. My kids did not like him as a biology teacher.
I had him as a biology teacher, I'm well aware.
Perhaps, Mrs. Willro, well remembers. Coach taught discipline on the playing field, Coach taught esprit de corps, everyone was self-supporting, mutually supporting of other people. Perhaps, as I mentioned in the email that Mrs. Willro was the recipient of, the greatest thing he had going for him is he would spend as much time with a child, a student, who was achieving more in relative to his or her skill than some star. There's no marching bands, there's no cheerleaders, there's no loudspeakers when you're in track and field. It's just you against nature, to some degree, you against yourself. Coach knows how to develop people, and if half of what I read was true, he was very poorly treated by this board, and I think is owed an apology by the board and this community. I don't know who you replaced him with. I'm sure he or she has excellent skills, but he or she is not Coach Cohen. I'm not a recent guy to this note neither. 10 years ago or so, this board upgraded the field, thanked you, didn't affect my kids, but you spent a whole bunch of money, rubberized field, or, I haven't been there, but something happened there anyway. So I wrote to this board, along with other fathers, saying, "Let's name the track after Coach." Some guy named Sinnet was too big to even respond to me. I had to call twice to get a response. He says, "We don't name fields or things," or whatever, "for teachers." Bad choice. We can apparently name them for staffers, though. The most high-profile point in this town right now is named for a guy who's not here anymore, who was a well-paid staffer, and he was, I don't want to say he was a friend of mine, but I had great respect for him. So we can name it for staffers. We're also self-satisfied, but we can't name it for a teacher. The rubber hits the road every day here, committed to excellence, the rubber hits the road in the classroom or on the field. Not here! We need smart people, we need people making good decisions, but what we need are excellent teachers and excellent coaches, and we were fortunate, as some guy who spent 35 years here, we had two-in-one. And we use our judgment, or whoever's judgment, to force him to say sayonara. Not good. Not good, Mrs. Willro.
Thank you very much for your interest and your commitment to your ideals, and we are very sorry. No one here thinks that Coach Cohen was a bad coach, ever. You will never get any one of us for admitting that.
No, but you didn't test your judgment.
The situation occurred, and we can't really talk about it, but we appreciate you being here and speaking of it.
I think he deserves an apology.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Anyone else, public audience? All right, moving on. Can we please board in administrative communications? Dylan?
I hope everyone has enjoyed this warm fall weather, this weird front that we've been getting. I know that the elementary school students have, many of the elementary schools have had bike and walk to school days, which many of the students participate in either biking or walking to school with their friends. The elementary schools also were visited by Simsbury Fire Department for National Fire Safety Week. The Central School, the sixth graders also launched the school's character education program by planning assembly and performing skits to show what qualities make up a respectful student. And Latimer Lane and Terrifil are helping out those affected by the recent hurricanes by collecting money, and so far together they've collected $1,000 for the Hats for Hurricanes fundraiser, with Terrifil's donations going to the Scarborough Elementary School in Houston, and Latimer's donation is going to support families in Puerto Rico. In the Middle School, Mr. White will be holding the first parent breakfast on October 18th, where parents can come in and discuss topics involving the Middle School, and any questions and concerns or praise for what's been going on. At the High School, this weekend we had a very successful homecoming weekend, which first started with varsity football's huge victory over New Britain on Friday, and then followed by a very well-attended dance on Saturday night, even after a SAT test in the morning. So students were at school on a Saturday almost all day, which is great. And tomorrow freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will be taking the PSAT with a modified schedule for the school day after the test, and I wish all of them good luck. I know how difficult it is, and once it's over, you'll be glad it's over.
Thank you very much. Sound words. Tom?
Nothing to say, thank you.
Sue?
I'm good, thanks.
All set?
Mr. Sullivan?
Surprise.
Move right along, Mr. Sullivan.
Unfortunately, it's my sad duty to report that since our last meeting, Simsbury High School community lost Clark Bacheler in his battle with cancer. Clark taught for the last 12 years at Simsbury High, took his retirement in June as the illness progressed. He was a remarkable educator. It was his second career after a full career in the military, both tour in the Marines and full career in the Coast Guard. We celebrated his life this weekend. The funeral was something else with the military honors at the end, and Clark is actually going to be buried in Arlington National Cemetery. So, really, special guy. Our thoughts are with his family.
Our thoughts and prayers go to his family. I'm all set.
I was just at a dedication, but I was going to let Teri.
So, yes, Burke and I were just at the dedication of the solar panels at Simsbury High School, and it was really great, and we had a good turnout from the people who were very involved in making it happen. We had a great local volunteer group, and we had Tom Roy from our Director of Public Works from Simsbury, and Diane McCarthy-Burkery from Eversource, and Matt McUnus, who was very helpful in getting a grant for us for those solar panels, which made it happen, from the Connecticut Green Bank. And Mr. Bertheam was able to give us a walkthrough for the online portal so that we can watch all the elements of what kind of, how much energy is produced during the day, and we can chart it over the year, and so it's really great, and he's going to use it as a great tool for education for the students as they come in. Previously, they've been using Avon's data, so they're very excited to have Simsbury's data to work from from now on. So that was a great, that was a very nice meeting and a wonderful thing for our school district. Hopefully, we'll be able to do more of that in the future. Burke, we're back to you. Anything else?
I didn't have any of that. I was just glad you were able to be there, and Andy O'Brien was able to host, and it was a very good turnout, and we're glad.
It was exciting.
Kick it off formally, and now it'll be able to be used for any, you know, for any classroom that is.
Exercises that are necessary, or they find for the need for. Mr. Curtis?
Not as much information as I had hoped to provide on a budget update, but, you know, both sides are talking across the aisle, which is important. They do not anticipate a vote this week, but hopefully in the next coming weeks, we will have something that will help us ascertain where we sit this year, and really can be thoughtful about planning as we move forward next year. So I was talking to Burke before, the importance of, once we have an opportunity to look at those numbers, to have that Board of Finance meeting, or three-board involvement at least, so we're all on the same page in terms of what it means for current year, and how that shapes our planning as we move forward for what we know will be a challenging budget planning year next year.
That's great. Yep, it was a nice homecoming weekend. I heard that was very successful, and all the senior nights at the high school have been.
Very well.
Very exciting for the kids. I can't believe we're already at senior night, we're in October already. But thank you all for everything, nothing else. Moving on to the acceptance of our minutes for the meeting of September 26th.
Move to approved minutes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mr. Sullivan.
Just an informational item tonight, one, the last certified teacher hire of this season. You may recall that just before the school year started, our middle school department supervisor accepted a district-wide leadership position in another town. We decided not to fill the leadership vacancy at this time of year, just not feeling like it was the right time to go out and do that kind of search. So this is a part-time position, teaching the three classes that the department leader would have taught in that split assignment. So I'm pleased to say that we brought on Jack Ford, and Jack's, most of Jack's experience in his teaching career has come in parochial schools, and most of it at the high school. This is going to be an eighth-grade position, where it's an Algebra I class and two of our new Math &amp; Focus curriculum classes, so excited to add Jack to the Henry James staff with that knowledge of what it takes to have a mathematical background, ready to succeed at the high school level. So that would end our certified hiring for the 2017 summer.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to Burke. Are you doing the energizing?
Yes. So we had started with energy efficiency improvement projects, several years ago, utilized some money from the non-lapsing account to do work at the high school and Tooton Hills and Henry James, and within the last six months or so, we did some work at Terrifil, and now Central and Latimer is the most current projects, and it's focusing on lighting, LED lighting throughout much of the buildings. There's also some energy management systems in our HVAC, trying to be more efficient there, being able to control the building temperatures better. So this work is, again, funded with support from our Eversource and Connecticut Natural Gas incentive programs. In this particular case, we did not have money to prepay at all, so we were looking to take advantage of what they call an on-bill financing. Essentially, it's a 0% interest, and the cost of the, the net cost to the district is something that they would phase out over the payback period. So it's about a four-year payback period, and essentially, we are looking for a formal motion this evening that's part of the financing program that is supporting this work. So we have a fairly lengthy motion, but we're looking to have the superintendent, the printed motion said "and" business manager, we're really happy to just say "or," we only need one signature, but we're looking for the extensive paperwork packet. We gave you some of the contract, it's not the, all of the various documents that do have to be signed. So we are hoping to answer any questions that you have, but really trying to meet the needs of this finance program, so that it'll just essentially be, you know, paid as a part of our bill. So we're going to basically break even, and then after the four-year, we'll enjoy the real net savings. But we're trying to reduce energy usage, and that's our latest.
That's great.
Latest two buildings that we're trying to improve. So Squadron Line would be next, if you're thinking of the.
Great. Do we have a motion?
I have the motion, if you want me to read it.
Thank you, please do.
Move that the Board of Education has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described on Exhibit A of the taxable government obligation contract dated as of September 1, 2017, between town of Simsbury, Connecticut, Board of Education as obligor, and M-Cor Credit Corporation as obligee. And the Board of Education has determined that the contract substantially in the form presented to this meeting is in the best interests of the Board for the acquisition of such equipment, and the Board hereby approves the entering into of the contract and hereby designates and authorizes the superintendent to execute and deliver the contract on the Board's behalf, with such changes thereto as such person or persons deems appropriate, and any related documents, including any escrow agreement, necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the contract.
Do you have a second?
Got all that.
Thank you very much. All second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, Burke?
I'm sorry, I didn't ask a question.
Are we in a position yet to quantify the financial benefits associated with this project, and combined with the financial benefits associated with the solar project, so that we have some idea of how much money is our system actually saving with this very aggressive, very creative, and very thorough energy efficiency program? Can you give us some idea of that, if not at this meeting, maybe at another meeting?
Sure. I mean, for these two most recent ones, it's essentially a break-even, because the payback period's four years, and they're giving us four years to spread that cost of it. So after the fourth year, we would start to see the real net annual savings. So probably the best thing for me to do is give you a formal update on, I think you're looking at ones we've done previously as well.
Yeah. The system has really done a great job with planning and managing energy efficiency projects. I think it'd be great, and I think the public probably would be interested to know what the magnitude of these savings.
Burke, it's fair to say that as those kinds of systems go, a four-year payback is pretty fast.
Yeah.
A lot of them tend to be nine or 10 years. That's pretty common.
We've been fortunate with working with PowerPoint Energy as the vendor that we've been working with, that, you know, we've been able to find the lowest-hanging fruit, the things that have the fastest payback. And so, in this case, we're just trying to touch every building, and then, as has been discussed, we obviously have other types of solar and other projects, and those have their own paybacks, and we'll bring those forward if we have programs that look of interest to us. But these are definitely a short turnaround.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on, we have October 1 enrollment report.
That's going to be me.
Excellent.
Excellent. So, longtime board members will recognize these as reports that always happen at this time of year. They're important as a checkpoint for how our budget planning went from last year, and it's really the first glimpse of what you need to be paying attention to for budget for the year ahead. October 1 represents the state reporting date on enrollment for all school districts. It also represents the finality of where that reporting. I watched the ins and outs of this all summer long, who's moving in, who's moving out, so to be able to share where that all landed in a succinct way is my job tonight. I find this very interesting and could talk about it all night. I know that's not probably your interest, so you received an extensive report that has a lot of detail. What I'm going to show you is some very broad overview slides of the key information that you need to see in terms of our enrollment. So it starts here with the big picture of our enrollment from last year compared to enrollment from this year, and you can see, based on the bottom right-hand corner, we are down 71 students, and you'll see very shortly that that's almost exactly where projected. Never, we're going to go back there. That's all right.
You want the clicker?
No. I'm okay. She's over-anticipated there.
We're depending on you to get through this. To keep this moving.
So, kind of the remarkable coincidence of the exact same number of students as last year at the elementary level. We did that with one fewer teacher, actually, though, with the same number of students, one fewer classroom teacher. As expected, the middle school, down 32 students. All of that comes in the form of a smaller seventh grade moving in, and a larger eighth grade into ninth grade moving out, and then the same situation at the high school. So down 71 students. Now, Ms. Lomki will show you where that compares to projected, and you can see K6 overall at the top of the screen. The Nezdek projection was almost exactly on. It was only five over what was projected, our 1976, slightly over there, 1971. What they don't promise to hit as exactly is where the individual schools land. That's a much tougher projection for them. So this year, you will see that the ones that came in larger than expected were Central and Latimer, and I'm going to be sharing another level of detail on that data with you about why that might be. And a much smaller than projected was Squadron Line. That was a situation where four sixth grades moved out, and you'll remember during budget season, we had planned on four kindergartens moving in, and during our cuts that we needed to make in the spring, realized we would only need three kindergartens at Squadron Line. So that's actually, we responded very well to that smaller-than-anticipated yield, if you will. Other schools would be exactly within the range that you would expect. So overall, did Nezdek do a good job? We hit it within three, which is a pretty remarkable number when you're looking at over 4,000 students. This is a grade level, how we watch these trends. You'll see, most of them are in the single digits. I will point out this one right here, first grade, plus 13. That's one we've always followed closely over time to see whether, especially when we had half-day kindergarten, to see whether we had more first graders coming in. That number's been much smaller in the last few years. I talked to some of the families that put first graders in. I think we have an interesting thing to watch with Winton Berry Early Magnet School, where a number of Simsbury families, if you look on the Magnet School report, if you have, that's a school just for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. So if you have a kindergartner, but you also have a younger child, they won't guarantee you a preschool seat unless you keep the older child in kindergarten. So a number of families said, "We're fully intending to come to first grade at Squadron or Latimer, or wherever it is, but we're going to do another year of kindergarten at Winton Berry." So I spoke to a number of families, and I think that's something we have to watch over time. I don't think any of the other numbers were surprising to me. This is kind of Nezdek's report card over the years, if you will. How have they done in terms of projections? So at the top, you can see that this year's number was very close, within three, but some of you will remember that last year was as far off as we had been in the 10-year cycle of this, that they were, we yielded 83 more students than Nezdek had predicted for us, required us to add a number of teachers late in the summer, you'll remember, at the elementary level, and was pretty significantly off, and as a result, we had a long conversation with the demographers at Nezdek after last year, and fed them a whole bunch of information about the new developments in town and the turnover of real estate, and quite frankly, they made a pretty significant adjustment on their algorithms based on the information we fed them. As a result, I think they got it right this year. I think we got good information to them as those developments have come online, and I'll be sharing a little bit more about those developments as we go. But as you can see, it's still a company that we can work with and rely, I mean, three out of the last four years, you're within single digits. It's a pretty remarkable way that they go about doing their business. Here, it's another way to see the schools. This is not projected, this is actual-to-actual, so you just have to pay attention to what you're looking at. And here you can see Central and Latimer with increases. We did add, I would note, we added a teacher to Central School in early August. We saw the first grades go well above class-size guidelines, and so we did respond to that. Latimer Lane, the move-ins were extraordinarily late. We had move-ins after August 20th, some of them August 25th, long after we had assigned classrooms, assigned teachers, and had to respond to that, not by adding a new teacher, but by adding some tutorial support into the classrooms that went over class size. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the class-size report. Squadron, as I reported earlier, we reacted to that during budget season, so I think we used the numbers to respond appropriately to a responsible cut in the spring. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see a little bit more of the reasons for these. So with Central and Latimer, this is where Sue Kakamo, our enrollment coordinator, is showing you, once the school year ended until the first day of school, how many did she register versus how many withdrawn. And so you can see clearly, Central and Latimer have a high yield of registers as opposed to withdrawals, but that's not the case at Squadron. So Squadron, it was simply a matter of that kindergarten coming in with only three classrooms, but it took me a while to dig it out, and why that number was coming in even smaller than expected. And it turned out that almost 20 students moved out of Squadron Line from October 1 till the end of the year last year. And if that had happened in any other school, it would have been more noticeable, but Squadron is big enough that that kind of snuck under the radar. So the move-outs there actually happened prior to summer of 2017, which is very unusual in Simsbury, that we tend not to have that kind of move-out during the school year. So before we move on to the rest of the report, I want to point to a document that we've worked, that's in your folders, and this is all about the new developments, and I think will shed some light on why Central and Latimer are experiencing the gains in population that they are.
I think I need a map of where all these places are.
So I'll talk you through it.
Where all these places are.
So I'm going to take it one school at a time, so I'm at the top part of the document, and you can see that three of the newer developments are Central School. So Carson Way is the homes, both Carson Way and Highcroft are kind of near Streton Brook Road.
Are they in Powder Forest?
Yeah, right where Powder Forest is. Yep.
So adjacent to that 55 and older.
Exactly. So Carson Way is standalone homes, and all the rest of these are rental properties, but Carson Way, you can see, is scheduled, so the new level of detail we did on this, we're showing you how many units are proposed with the planning documents in town. So for Carson Way, it's 74. Only 29 of those are currently built, and 24 of those are currently occupied. That's a development that's going rather slowly. I talked to the developer, he's tending to build five or six houses at a time, and then once he sells those, he goes on to the next five or six. These other developments have gone up much more quickly. So Highcroft Place is actually adjacent, down the road from Carson Way, it's all rental properties. You can see 224 proposed units, and they've built 128 of them, and actually occupied 114 of them. And then, as you look over, you'll see how many families and students that's yielding for us. And then the last Central School-zoned one is Mill Commons, which are the apartments near Mill Wright's, kind of across from the high school area, and 88 units, all built and almost all occupied. So you can see those three Central School developments have added a total of 24 students to the Simsbury Public Schools enrollment. If you look at the bottom part of the sheet, that's the six-month-ago data, and those same three developments were only yielding 12 students. So this is the watch for the next several years, as these developments come online, where are we going to see them yielding students, and where are we not? So most of these Central School ones have been modest, but I think Highcroft bears some watching right now. But I think Highcroft bears some watching right now, in terms of a whole nother phase of that that's going to happen within the next year.
Oh, they're building more?
One development that is zoned for Squadron Line, and that's Dorset Crossing, so up by the skating center. Is my map good enough for you, Ms. Willer up here?
I'm getting there. I'm appreciating it.
So, the ones up by the skating center are 168 units, all built, 146 occupied. So, that one is what I would call essentially done. And we are, we have been very steady with between 15 and 18 students in that development for a while now. That's one of the things that I think we could take a look at. We made a decision, not knowing what would happen with Dorset Crossing, to zone it for Squadron Line, worried that it might overwhelm Terriffill. But now that it's built out, it would be entirely possible to say, that's a, that is, it's actually geographically within Terriffill's zone.
Right.
And something that I think we should think about with that development. And then, lastly, you can see three Latimer Lane-zoned developments. King's Ridge is a smaller development down on Route 10, kind of across from the Cumberland Farms that went in a couple of years ago, tucked in behind. 24 units, a much smaller player in this game, and very few students. And that one, talked to the owner, and he does not anticipate it ever being one that has very many students. The one that exploded on us is Aspen Green. That's the one essentially on the Avon border on Route 10, that went up very quickly over the last six months. So, all that building that you see is only 60 of the 180 planned units. And much more is going into the back. And you can see, we've already yielded 13 students from those 40 occupied units.
Do you just say, these are, with the exception of Carson Way, everything's a rental?
Everything is a rental. With pretty significant rents.
Right.
Yeah.
But it just means there's the opportunity for turnover.
Yes.
More quickly.
Yes.
That's what I'm just trying to think about.
And then, lastly, is the Hartford property, which is not developed yet. They would anticipate occupancy a year from now. And I did not get information on exactly how many are in the first phase. But overall, they're looking at 290 units, which would be a very significant number for us. There's no way all of those could absorb into Latimer Lane without looking at redrawing some lines. And so, that's a conversation that the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force would need to have, and one we'll be monitoring closely. Our way to kind of spitball who's moving into these neighborhoods, Sue Kakamo works with the registrar of voters. Obviously, not all people who move into apartment units register to vote. But that shows you down below, how many of the people who are registered are in their 60s, 50s, 40s, 30s, et cetera. So, who might have child, children who could access the school system. And what we'll do is keep giving, we're going to do this every six months and keep updating it for you.
Great.
So, that hopefully gives you some insight as to why Central and Latimer experienced the increase that, and Latimer's, quite frankly, Aspen Green, the move-ins of that were so late in the summer, those apartments were just opening, and I don't think we had time to respond to it. So, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's really great. Very helpful.
Just a comment on that.
Sure.
It's kind of, I just did a quick, I was kind of interested in what the average number of students per new family figure is. I did some quick arithmetic, and it looks like it's about 1.3.
In these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For these particular developments, 1.3 students per new family, which is an interesting planning metric, actually.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, certainly, we've experienced much, and not just Simsbury, the demographics of families are just smaller.
Yeah.
And, you know, certainly Simsbury has felt that.
Thank you.
So, just a couple more slides on the enrollment report. This is something the Board of Finance usually asks us to take a look at. What's your five-year decline? So, with the decline of 71 students this year, you're looking at 291 over the last five years. And that is a 7% decrease from the 4330 that we were at five years ago.
And how's that nationally?
Most Connecticut districts are decreasing at a, you know, pretty similar clip. So, it's not unusual in terms of our state.
Thank you.
This one is just some highlights of the enrollment analysis. 4,039 is now our October 1 number. Pre-K, though, is another 100 students that don't get counted in the state reporting. So, when you talk about our unified preschool at Squadron Line, please know that they're not all full-time students. Some are morning, some are afternoon. But there's 100 other bodies in the, over the course of the week, in there. The largest cohorts, and this is a theme that will play out as our Nezdek projections come, the 10th and 11th grade, near the end of the continuum, are two largest classes, roughly around 350 students, a little over that. And our two smallest cohorts are at the beginning part of the continuum, with kindergarten and second grade. So, that's going to be the story. The cutoff right now, when you look at where larger cohorts are, there's a big difference between 7th grade and 8th grade. So, it's about five more years for the larger cohorts to feed from 8th through 12th grade. And then, the way I describe this, the elementary has already kind of right-sized itself. The middle school's about halfway through that process, and the high school's just beginning. And that's what we'll be watching over the next five years. The bottom notice about open choice, but it's shown better on the next slide. I know the board and administration had a lot of talk about open choice, so I gave you a five-year history here of where we were. You can see, you look at the bottom of the slide, the first significant increase of choice students came. We were actually the first district that opened our preschool seats to a program called Early Beginnings. So, that was in 2013-14, where we first opened preschool seats and saw an increase. Last year, in 2016-17, we accepted all sibling seats, and that gave us a pretty significant increase. And I know we've talked about the goal of 4% with the board. We thought we'd be very close to the 4% goal last year. But then, when our projection came in, 83 students above where we had thought, we didn't get quite as close as we thought. The overall number didn't come down where we thought it would. So, this year, with the drop of 71 students to 4,039, and an increase of just eight choice students, you have 165 choice students, a population of slightly over 4,000, and that is 4.08%. So, our important enrollment goal related to choice, and our important programming goal, is met with that cohort.
Just a quick question about that. My recollection is, is that we had established as a matter of policy, a 3% goal for open-choice students, although there was an opportunity to go as high as 5%. That's what I'm remembering vaguely. But I just did the calculation for the two, for six years. The trend looks like this. 3 point, this is percentage, 3.0, 3.2, 3.4, 3.5, 3.8, 4.1. So, there's been a very, very steady increase in that percentage. And I'm just, just wanted to raise the question, if that has been a policy decision to gradually increase that percentage? It's.
We had certainly talked about the fact that that percentage, without adding very many students, would naturally always rise because the, if you think of the overall population as the denominator.
Yeah.
We knew that the denominator was going to be going down.
Yes.
And so, that's a conversation we had had. It's not a matter of a policy decision, as much as a year-to-year kind of gauging of where we were.
What is our policy, then, as far as the open-choice, number of open-choice, or percentage of student open-choice, that is, what is our policy?
We've never had a hard, fast policy number on how we bring students into the district. We grew the program when full-day kindergarten was put into place. We grew the program a second time, when we became the first district to provide preschool seats for students. Last year, Tom, we talked about how close we were to that 4%, and that it made a lot of sense for the district to expand some seats to move to that threshold, because in addition to the belief in the program, there's a financial incentive to do that. So, we were able to accomplish that. But we don't have a hard, fast percentage of students that we make sure we're at every year. I mean, we pay attention to the growth of the program and what opportunities were grown within the district. But it's not a written, written policy, if that's your question.
Actually, it is. I'm just wondering if there's, if there, if there should be some sort of a policy or a strategy to guide the development of that program. It could be that we want to, we want to reach a certain percentage of the district that the community and the district is comfortable with. Or we might want to go to a higher percentage than we already are. Or we might want to have, I just don't know, but.
I think we've had a strategy in place, and that's what Matt just went over. I mean, and that's been, that's been going since we reached the 3% mark, and then, looking at the 4% mark, as our successes grow and the students stay within the program from pre-K on, you know, it's, we're watching all the parts of it and analyzing it as we go.
So, what is the strategy? The strategy to grow the percentage? Because that's exactly what's been done.
Well, I think 4% was where we really wanted to kind of meet, and wait and see what we're doing with it, and then move on from there as we see the successes.
And.
And one of the things that, as I've thought about this too, is the 4% in some sense becomes easier to maintain, once you're there. Because we maintain a large percentage of students in the program. The 12th graders go out, you add a set of preschoolers, and you're kind of maintaining the boundaries. And so, there may have been a little push to get to 4%. I think it's going to be much easier to maintain, because I also think that overall population is going to continue to decline for about five more years.
Okay. So, then, basically, informally or informally, we've moved gradually for over six years from 3% to 4%.
4%.
We're at 4. We're comfortable, and that's where we're going to stay until we review the issue.
I think that's a fair.
But I think we constantly are reviewing it.
Yeah.
I mean, we analyze it every year. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Siblings will come in as well?
Correct. There's a wonderful woman named Renita Izal, who helps administer this program when you're taking new students in. They really sort of put the pressure on districts that when a sibling seat is offered, if you can take that sibling of an already sitting student, they really are encouraging you to do it. So, that number that, in the 2016-17, that, a large portion of that increase was almost all sibling seats. And that was important.
And that's, I think that's really important for our school culture.
It sounds really sensible, doesn't it?
Siblings, and the earlier we can offer seats within our continuum of grades, the more effective the experience will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Those two factors.
Excellent. And then, the last slide on enrollment, we just do have to pay attention to full-time magnet and out-of-district programs. I would say there's nothing, in terms of our comparisons from 2016 to 17, that is noteworthy. The Magnet School is almost exactly the same number, 145 last year, 143 this year. You should note that almost half of it is K and pre-K. So, a large portion of our Magnet School population is there. And then, part-time magnet and out-of-district, this is actually the Greater Hartford Performing Arts Academy as a part-time program. Please know that the Greater Hartford Math and Science is no longer a part-day program. So, those of you who are used to that, they don't offer that program as a half-day basis anymore. That's come off the list, which accounts for a little bit of the decline here, although that had not been a very popular program for our students in the last few years. And the other thing that's in here is the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center as a placement for students. So, nothing remarkable there. Question, any other, when we kind of did it as we went, but any other questions about the enrollment report?
Yeah, a couple of comments. The, because of the work that I do, we get into this, what we call PSAC, Public School Age Children. We usually use the Rutgers data. And that was around 0.6 to 0.7 students per dwelling unit. Simsbury, if you think of Simsbury, we're around 9,000 dwelling units and about 4,000 kids. So, we're a little bit below that 0.6 or so. But these numbers, if you look at the occupied units, sort of picking up on a little bit on what Tom was, where Tom was going, not the families, but the occupied units, so far, we're averaging 0.13. So, way below.
Yeah.
What the Rutgers numbers would predict. And even in the highest, which is Aspen Green, you're running at about 0.3 students per dwelling unit. So, I think we need to really think carefully about, you know, what is the nature of the residential units?
Yeah.
And how is it going to, that can tell us a lot and help us in our projections.
Sure.
I guess, that's where I'm going with that.
And as I made the calls to all the general managers of these places over this, I mean, it's interesting. There are very, Aspen Green is the first one where you can start to see three bedrooms.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is more conducive to a family than you would see at, for instance, Mill Commons or Highcroft Place.
Right.
Where many of them are, some are one-bedroom, and the most you see are two-bedroom.
Or even studios. A lot of them are studios.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we, I did a lot of looking at the floor plans. I wasn't checking out the properties for myself, but I was interested to see kind of what the rental prices were and what the floor plans were. It's pretty interesting developments here in Simsbury.
A couple of other points. One is, I think we ought to schedule a Facilities and Enrollment Meeting sometime soon. There's enough going on that we ought to bring everybody up to speed. It also, you know, and I know you've probably thought about this, but clearly with the waiting towards the north and the south side of Simsbury, we're going to need to start talking about redistricting.
Yeah.
And I think the sooner we start at least discussing it in the community and kind of getting it out there that we have to look at it, the better.
Yeah.
And I think we start with that with the committee.
Agreed.
Totally agree.
I did that, the 0.13 as well, but then I applied it to the proposed number of units. And we're looking at another, you know, potentially, if that same relationship calls another 80-plus students.
And with the concentration at Latimer, which is already, from a facility standpoint, the school that is.
Most strained.
Most strained.
Yeah, and most of those are going to come from there, because.
Right.
You may be looking, as Mike mentioned, between some movement in neighborhoods between Latimer and Tooten Hills, which we've done before. We did particularly in the swell of enrollment with the kindergarten, if you'll remember that.
Yeah.
When's the last time we did redistricting?
There was kindergarten redistricting from Latimer to Tooten Hills. I was in HR, so that was eight, seven, eight to, within eight to 10 years.
So, it's been quite a while.
It has.
Oh, and full, full, full neighborhoods was probably 20 years ago.
And that was something we had to, the board members that were here.
There was a Terriffill Squadron redistrict at one point.
There was a central, central Latimer, too.
So, we've done smaller, but not town-wide. Not in my.
Just by a couple neighborhoods. Thank you very much for those pointers. We will definitely make those.
Very interesting.
I was just going to ask you one little question that just stuck out to me. The change in 10th grade was 11? Like, that struck me as an odd.
I can't figure that out. I think it was just move-outs, because it was an increase in 11th grade. And those are not grades where we typically see.
Like, that's not, yeah, that's what, it just kind of stuck out to me, and I didn't know if you had any insight.
I noted it, but, you know, it certainly wasn't something.
Not one of those.
I mean, as a, as a percentage, it's still about 2.5%.
Right. I just thought it was kind of a big number for 10th grade.
Yeah. So, the other part of October 1 is, after the macro of looking at enrollment, we look at class sizes. And so, we take that in three parts, elementary, middle, and high school. Not surprising at all. So, I'll take the elementary piece and then bring some of our guests up, too. So, if you look at our summary here of elementary class sizes, I will remind you that, and we'll take it one piece at a time, grades K through 2. Our guidelines are a range of 18 to 22, which would imply an average of 20. And we hit the average perfectly. We're 19.9 when you look across town at the average primary class. But you can certainly see that we did go one classroom smaller at the, at the primary level. And the number exceeding the range, as I reported in September, increased significantly. We only had one class that was above that 22 guideline at the top last year. And this year, as we hit October 1, we had 10. If there's a good news to having more classes over guidelines, it's that eight of those 10 are just one student above. They represent the 23rd kid in the room in eight of those 10 classes. The other two have 24 kids in each room. And that is where we added the tutorial support at Latimer Lane, when you see the number go a couple above the guideline on those very late summer move-ins.
That 10 is a percentage, what percentage of the total number of classes is that?
Of, at the primary level, it's, well, it's 10.4%. Of, at the primary level, it's, well, it's 10.4% of all the classes if you look at the bottom of the column, but at the primary only, it's about 25%.
I didn't see that. Thank you.
Yep. So it is unusual, but as you'll see, as a theme at the middle school and high school, we made a lot of cuts in the fall, in the spring. It's not surprising to me that we are stretched a little bit on class size when we knew that we had to make a million dollars' worth of cuts in the spring from superintendent's budget to what was eventually adopted. So yes, we do feel the strain there with those classes that are tipping one over. At the upper primary, at the upper elementary grades, grades 3 through 6, we're in very good shape in terms of having 57 classrooms. None of them exceed the range. You could see those that are below the range. I would give you the example that these are cohorts that are at like, you know, my number that I pick on this is 57. If you did 57, you can either have 28 and 29 kids in a class, and that's way too big, or you can divide it into three, and you can have 19, 19, and 19, and now all three show as below range. So we're always going to make the decision to have, and there were just a lot of numbers that don't divide into the range. They, if you, no matter how you divide them, you're either going to be above or you're going to be below. And so that's where we stand, you know, but it is definitely an increase in the number that exceed the range, and you're going to hear that theme certainly again at the high school when we get to that portion.
And that 10, for grades K through 2, the 10 exceeding range, is that correct? That's approximately 25% of the total number of classes?
At the primary level only.
25%?
Right. So, but eight of the 10, again, are one student.
Are under, are below range.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in your report that was sent, you can see exactly what every class size is.
Thank you.
So that would be, that's how I monitor it all summer long. So that would be a useful document. So that's the elementary story. I'm going to ask the middle school administrative team to come to the table here and do a little bit of talking about the class size report at Henry James, which looks probably the most static of the three. It really is in good shape. But what I've asked Ann Jeanette Belmonte, our assistant principal, to do is also give you some highlights of their major work as they scheduled the building this year, was around some of those changes to the eight-period schedule at Henry James and some of the benefits that have happened, and then she'll transition into the class size portion of this.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So building this schedule all last spring and over the summer, finalizing it was really exciting. We have so many fantastic changes that we were able to implement with our new schedule. So what we are running is a modified block schedule in which we have three days during the week where students see all of their eight classes for approximately 42 minutes, and two days during the week, very similar to the high school where they're in block mode, and they see four of their classes for approximately 78 minutes. We are loving the new schedule. We're getting really great feedback because our teachers are definitely able to go a lot deeper with the content. They're able to offer their students just more rigorous experiences and really mastering those critical thinking skills that the students need to have by the time that they leave Henry James. What's even nicer about it is the fact that we feel we serve as a bridge. So our students coming up from the elementary level have had experiences with 60-minute blocks of instruction, and then they were coming to us for 45 minutes, and then heading to the high school for larger periods. So we really feel like we have a nice bridge now that we're able to help prepare students for the high school. What we've added during our block days are a connections period. Those are two days a week. They're about 45 minutes long, and we have some really nice small groups of students meeting with teachers during that time, and they're really able to focus on what we call our three Cs, where we're building character, we're building connections, we're helping children make, you know, take on different challenges, and just a great way to really say as a middle school, we're able to not only promote the academics, but the social and emotional well-being of each and every student, too. So that's really proving to be something that's just working out really well. Another benefit of the schedule this year is that we were able to add two additional grade eight year-long UA electives. We had one for technology education. We now are happy to offer one for art as well as family and consumer science. So those cohorts are around 18 students apiece, so we have 54 of our eighth-grade students partaking in these experiences, which has been really nice. We're also happy with our schedule because we've been able to maintain, I think we're in year six now, of our world language program and students actually getting to take the classes that they selected as their first choice. So that definitely has played a part into the schedule build and the class sizes. Also, we have for our PE and health, in years past, health was part of our unified arts rotation. That's no longer the case. We've removed it from that rotation, and we've created a PE and health wellness concept. So students are paired in cohorts of traditional classroom sizes, anywhere from the 21 to 25 range, and they work with either a single teacher who's dual-certified or a pair of teachers, one in each area, to have a nice combined wellness curriculum that's been put into place. So it's really nice for the kids to see their PE and health teacher on a rotational basis. And another piece, which is just even as great, we have moved from quarters into trimesters. So our unified arts teachers are definitely starting to see the benefit of having their kids 60 days for each rotation as opposed to the 45 that was once offered. So we made all of these great changes to a traditional eight-period day with essentially a flat staffing. So a lot of just positives to share with you on that front. So when we look at our class sizes, you can see that for the 17-18 year, we do have 308 classes that are being offered. That is down from last year and years past because of the declining enrollment that we saw in grade 7, and certainly not having to hold as many classes as we once needed to. Our classes that are exceeding range for this year, we are at nine. And then for our classes that are falling below range, we are right around 51, so a very slight increase from last year. And some of those pieces just fall with the different changes that we have with our schedule. We have removed, as I said, the art, I'm sorry, the health rotation from UA, and they are actually seeing class sizes now as typical content area classes do, 21 to 25, because they are paired up with their PE. So that's a major difference for us for class sizes this year. And again, I think the world language plays a huge piece of that by being able to offer students their first-choice classes, which is nice for us to be able to do.
Questions about our middle school class size report. As I said, it's the most similar to last year. So, and a lot, I want to give the administrative team some credit. It was a big change to go from the schedule that we had to the one that we imagined, and now that it's been implemented without an impact on class sizes, you know, kudos to the team.
And the teachers are. I'm sorry, Tom.
No, that's okay.
How are your eighth graders adjusting? Because they had last year, and this is so very different.
They're fine. I think what we did very well at the very start of the school year was we held a strong orientation for all students, where we walked them through the schedule, how to interpret it, you know, the differences from last year. It took them just a couple of days to really figure it out. But right now, I mean, six weeks into school, we're hearing positives from the students as well as the faculty. So, so far, so good.
Yeah, so the faculty's all, they're transitioning as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent.
And health and PE, that's a full year now?
It is. So PE was always full year, but the health, now that it's paired up with the PE as a health wellness combo class, is full year.
So some days classroom, some days not.
Absolutely. Yep.
Just a quick comment. I'd like to compliment you on a very articulate and well-organized and well-delivered presentation. That was really good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent. Thank you. And our final guest of the evening is Mr. Para, who has now been through his first full year as a schedule builder. He told me he's learned a lot and enjoyed the work, and, you know, but this is another place where we did make some staffing reductions during our budget cuts, and you're going to see that there is a little bit of an impact on class size.
Right. So this was my first year, starting with a blank board and then kind of building from there. We had to shave about 2.8 FTE from the high school, and in doing this, we had to be strategic in how we assigned the FTEs. And I worked with the department chairs on that. I worked a lot. Mr. Sullivan spent a lot of time in my office in the spring to kind of go through and look at the numbers and make some decisions. And I'll go through the numbers, but to kind of let you know strategically, a lot of our decisions were that the classes that were going to be bigger were going to be the senior classes or the higher-level classes. That's kind of a decision that we made to say, where would this best, where would these numbers work best? And that's the decision that we went with, because we've had some success with that in the past, in which we've had to build bigger classes, and they've been those older classes, older students or the AP classes. So if we look at this, and as you can see, we have fewer classes overall in our core classes, down, the 367 down to, from 380 last year, but we did go up quite a bit in terms of classes that exceed. We went up to 63, and we were able to go down lower to 105. I don't, when you all started to do math, I got a little nervous. I didn't do any math on this. I don't know if you did that. I don't know proportionately what that is, but it's pretty good proportion in terms of the classes that have gone above. And again, like I said, the number that's different for us is that it is more senior classes. We always have a number that's above, and it's usually those singleton classes. We run, run. It could be above or below. That's kind of what we have. And if you look and you see, like, the visual arts and business and all of those classes that have so few below, or above, excuse me, that exceed the numbers, the zeros and the ones and the twos, those really almost can't go above because of safety concerns. So those were really, our numbers are locked in, where the only thing you're ever really going to get are numbers that are below in all of those. This year was different for us, heading into the summer. It's the first year where, at a time, we had to close classes, where people were pretty fluid in terms of when, we have the sign-ups, many of you have gone through this, and we have the cutoff dates, but ultimately, we really are pretty fluid and allow kids to say, hey, I've thought about it a little more, and over the summer I want to change something. We had to go to a waiting list in a couple of classes. This was the first time, I mean, I've only done it for two years, so I can't really say it's the first time in my life, isn't pretty significant. But in looking back and talking to the people in the past, it hasn't been done. We have some guidance councils that have been around for over a decade or so, and it hasn't been done in the past. I'm pleased to report that over the course of the time, we're able to accommodate everyone. But it was the first time, kind of the first little sign that things are going to be pretty tight. And we just finished our first ad drop period, and we had to go to a waiting list for a while with one of our classes, but again, we were able to accommodate all of them. So it's just this idea of, it's tight. I wish we could get to all the classes averaging out to where they want to be. It's impossible, to be honest with you, because of like the numbers that Mr. Sullivan had said earlier, when you get a certain number, you're either, you have to make a choice to either be above or below. And when, we've always kind of been able to almost make the choice to go below rather than above, but this year we had to make different choices. And if you look, you have the individual classes, you'll see clearly the AP GOV is one of those classes where I think we have seven sections, and they're all at 27. And.
Is that your biggest?
Over. In terms of classes being over, is it number 63? 62 of them are one or two over.
Oh.
Only one, and it's a French class in which we have three, three or four over in both, three in one section and two in the other, yes.
Okay.
So we've been able to balance the overs, and most of our unders, with the exception of the singletons, most of our unders are either only a couple, or they are, they're in the same realm of classes in which we have overs, and there's just nothing, I mean, we'll look at it. I have Mr. Eisner here, who's an intern with me, who's working with me over the summer, trying to balance classes, and was saying he'd go home and have dreams about three matches, four doesn't, we keep going back and forth, trying to balance. I mean, just sometimes you have a couple of singletons that funnel everyone into a particular period and funnels everyone out of a particular period, and that's just the way it is. And then we do our best to try to balance all of that.
Complicated.
Anybody have any other questions?
Well, I just do want to comment. The, in doing the percentage of core classes that exceeded the range, last year was 9%, and this year it's 17%. And, but it was good to hear that the vast majority of the classes that are over the range are just one or two students, which is also what we heard as far as the junior high, junior high school or the elementary school was concerned. Just to, one question, one comment. Is the increase from 9% exceeding to 17% exceeding in core classes solely the result of reductions in FTEs, or not? And if not, what is the reason for that?
Um, I can't think of another reason. Yeah. I would argue that it's largely because of the.
Two FTEs.
Reduced FTE.
Correct.
2.8.
2.8, yeah.
Almost three, yeah.
Yeah, three.
So.
Shaving from those core areas.
That's the issue. And so what we're seeing, and what the public is seeing.
Is a result.
To the extent that the public is listening to this.
Correct.
Is that we are bumping up to and exceeding our limits as a result of required reductions.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, and I think it echoes, if you remember the comments that Ms. Wohlerup made at the last Board of Finance meeting of, we are right at the point where we're asking you not to cut anymore because cutting further is really going to start to impact where we are with class sizes. I think those proved to be accurate comments when you look at these reports. We are strained, we're not overwhelmed, but we're strained in a way that we would expect to be after a million dollars' worth of cuts.
Tom, in a normal summer, with immigration at the elementary school and where things hit at Latimer like we did the prior year, two students over a guideline probably would have resulted in an additional teacher. And we made the choice not to do that due to lack of budget and the reductions, right? We don't have the flexibility.
And that, thank you for getting at that question. But as far as the comment is concerned, there's every reason to believe that this is going to, this problem's going to continue. And so I don't, since I have only been a board member for two and a half years, I don't know when is the last time we thoroughly examined class size parameters. And I, because I haven't been present for any of those discussions, I don't know how they were established, I don't know how we justify, I don't know what science we're using if we are, what experience we're using. But what I do wonder now is if we are facing, as a board and as a system, a situation, maybe next year, maybe the year after that, when we're going to look at these class size ranges and change them and stretch them. Is that a possibility? Or will we continue with, because the science supports what we, what we say the ranges are, will we continue with these ranges and just keep reporting more and more overages?
The science is all in conflict with each other. It just, none of it's clear. I think that's not a bad suggestion, that maybe we ask the leadership team to bring it forward at some point, a discussion about our current class size standards. We haven't had that in a long time. It's been.
I think about 10 years, probably. We adjusted a, the second grade guideline to 18 to 22. It was 25. We adjusted it down to 22. I think that's the last time.
Probably not a bad idea to revisit it at the very least and have a dialogue on it.
That analysis apparently was done before technology.
Yeah.
I'm a teacher myself, and there is no question in my mind that the technology that I have available to me to teach allows me to teach well to larger classes. There's just no question about it.
Well, you're teaching college, too.
Yeah.
So you've already, you're teaching people that have already learned how to learn.
No, but the point I'm making is that technology is designed to improve efficiency. And we wouldn't have the technology, well, it's not just efficiency, but efficient, there's efficiency benefits, educational efficiency benefits associated with technology, no matter what the level is, I would think. And so if we have established these ranges pre-technology, maybe there's a justification for changing it.
And other changes in education as well, the new standards and everything else. There's been significant shifts.
Yeah, I think there's something else going on here. I just kind of real quick checked off which classes, I only looked at the overs, and just about all of them are level two or three, which has a smaller class size. So we've recognized that some classes should be a little bit small.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, we can, you know. And, I mean, we can, you know, so relative to the, to the level one, you know, we want these classes to be smaller. I mean, we can change the, change the size, but that's still, that's not going to change how many kids are in the class.
No, it's not.
No, it's an excellent, excellent point, though, and we definitely should look at that again. And there, you know, as you say, there's so many different parts coming to the table, and it should be evaluated regularly anyway.
Right. So we'll certainly take, I'll bring the class size policy back out. I would say to what Mike's comments, there is a lot of conflicting research. If anything is pretty clear in the consensus of the research, it already is reflected in your policy that if you want to talk about small class sizes, the bang for the buck comes in that K1, 2, you know, some would argue 3, and, but that's where, the only thing that's clear about the research is that, and that's already reflected in your policy.
Okay.
Are there more students shifting from level one to level two in more recent years?
More other way, more students in honors, yeah.
Stretching to level one.
Yeah.
Would help the overages.
Yeah.
Which is not over saying.
So...
The other thing we might want to think about in the discussion on class size is how we report this out. You know, quite frankly, when, it's a bit of a blunt instrument when you say we're, a class is below class size, and we put it up on that list because it missed by one.
Right.
To me, that's not material.
Yeah.
You know, I think maybe we need a different standard where we rate it as below class size. In other words, like you might say, if you're, if you're out of budget by more than 10 percent, I want to know about it.
Yeah.
I would say the same thing here. If you're below the class size guideline by more than 10 percent, then we should know about it.
Right, right.
It's almost the range rather than the...
Yeah, you know, when so many of these classes are one, the difference is one that, you know, it really doesn't...
As long as it stays there, as long as it stays at one, that's...
Yeah, I'd like to know if it's a material difference from our guidelines, and one isn't, in my opinion. So one is as close as we can get, so, in a lot of cases.
Right. And, and...
That's part of the discussion.
When you look at, I think that's a really excellent point of how we look at this...
It only took me 16 years of being on the board, or two hours.
One too many times of that PowerPoint.
Finally! Finally!
The stuff, the stuff eventually comes to me.
On the full, on the full report that you have, where all the columns of all the data are, I always try to say to people, look at the average.
Right.
Because the average is the choice that we make.
Yeah.
That's the conscious choice, that when we divided that by four instead of five, we hit the average, and then what happened with above and below is the whims of a schedule that Ken was addressing well in his presentation, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Para.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this wraps...
A lot of work in that.
Yeah.
This wraps up with, now we send it all off back to NASDAQ, back to our folks who do the projections for us. Cindy and I have it ready to go for tomorrow, so...
They're going to be very proud of themselves.
That will go, they will be. That will go back to them, and then we will be back, they'll turn that around, and probably in either four or six weeks, we'll be back with their next set of projections, which set up the budget cycle, so.
Thank you all for your work. This is tedious, tedious work, but it's really important to know all this stuff, and it's really important.
I don't find it tedious, so...
You know what? That makes me happy. Thank you very much, Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Para. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Anyone have any more questions about all the stuff that we just talked about? We have a great big to-do list that we will send forward and get some meetings set up for all the other work that we need to do, look at things again, and I will open up to public audience. We have some public. No audience? All right.
Talk about why you're here.
College for education?
Uh, no, journalism.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent.
Then you assign me to attend a board of education meeting?
A meeting for a town.
So you picked the most exciting one you could find.
Yeah, it's right in itself, people.
And Mr. Para referenced science teachers in administrative program. Phil, you want to tell them about what program you're in?
I'm in CCSU's 092 six-year educational leadership program. And I signed on with Kent, started working with them middle of the summer.
Great.
We had the class scheduling, and then moved from there.
Do you teach?
Do.
Where?